You're on. You're live, Mayor. Mayor, you're live.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the special work session. Today is Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's approximately one, one P. M. I am Mayor Endricus. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as our courageous men and women of the Los Cruces Police and Fire Department. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, again, good afternoon. We have one item on the agenda, and it'll be solicitations and shopping cart ordinance. Chief Story.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Jeremy Story, Police Chief. First of all, thank you for being here on a, a non-council Wednesday, or Monday, for this special work session. I know those are valuable, and they don't come up very often. I want to start with a couple stories from last week, and I do want to say thank you to everyone that attended our town hall. It was a good turnout and a lot of good questions and discussion. And this may not seem related to what we're talking about today, but there is a nexus, and unfortunately, all these things tend to intertwine with each other, and they're, they don't happen in a silo. They're, the issues with addiction, the issues with homelessness and crime, all have some overlap. So immediately after the town hall for crime reduction, one of our deputy chiefs and lieutenant was in the back parking lot, the employee parking lot, talking for a little bit when they heard the sound of glass breaking. They moved around to the side of the building, that south side, when one of our facilities managers ran out of the building as well, and someone had thrown a rock through the city hall window to that office. They were able to eventually get a good description off the video, find the subject at the south end of the downtown mall, and arrest him for felony criminal damage to property. It's about a sixteen hundred dollar window. The point for this incident is that this person is no stranger to us or to many of the people in the city that deal with these types of issues. And in fact, many of the issues he has do center around solicitation. I'm just gonna kind of go through this. This is just from two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, the incidents that he's been involved in. Many of these are violent crimes. I'll give you a few incidents, just randomly looking up four or five. There's one where he asked somebody for a lighter, he solicited for a lighter, and he threw a rock and hit him in the head when he said no. He spit on a citizen over off the Lowman Walton area doing the same thing. He attacked a customer with a baton and hit them in the head. He attacked another customer at a different business and ended up shattering the window to a vehicle that there's two babies inside. Now, not everybody is, has this extensive of a history, but there are too many people in Los Cruces. And there's a number of things implicated by this, of course, competency being one of them, some of the other issues with releasing people when they already have existing conditions of release for new offenses. But it also plays into this because many of the behaviors we're seeing at our businesses and other places are these aggressive, violent behaviors, not just from this gentleman. And to top it all off, mostly for irony, at the same time this was happening on the east parking lot, a second incident was happening where we have a warrant operation for felony warrants that's funded by the state. They saw someone that they were looking for who also fits the same type of repeat offender demographic. He fled straight to City Hall, where he was eventually taken into custody in the front parking lot. So you had those two incidents happen at the same time after our town hall. To get into the meat and potatoes of why we're here, I'm gonna start with the solicitation ordinances. These are, again, are already existing ordinances. We're looking to modify them to do two things primarily. One is to remove potentially unconstitutional language and to really focus and narrow that focus to a public safety interest. The changes in both twenty-one dash sixty-two and twenty-one dash sixty-three are fairly minor overall as they stand now. And this is kind of just an overview of what we have to accomplish with a solicitation ordinance. It has to be neutral in content, meaning that if we enforce it for panhandling, we have to enforce it for somebody that's potentially doing a car wash or that's soliciting for a fundraiser or a funeral. It has to be neutral in content. Another thing is it has to be narrowly tailored. So the more specific the restrictions are, the more likely it will be upheld. The more broad it is, the less likely it will be upheld in court. Leave open, ample, alternative channels of communication, and this one is really important to serve a significant government interest that is pressing and legitimate, in this case primarily, public safety. And depending on what we're talking about, whether it's on aggressive panhandling or panhandling around roadways where it becomes dangerous, public safety is what we're after with these ordinances. So we'll start with twenty-one dash sixty-two, which is prohibited solicitations. This is how it reads currently as a draft. It shall be unlawful for any person to solicit money or other things of value, or to solicit the sale of goods or services in the manner described in sub-paragraphs one through three of this section. I'm gonna go through one through three individually, so I'm gonna forego reading it in its entirety, but there's three separate ways that this ordinance would be implicated. The first one is solicitation is prohibited in an aggressive manner in a public area or on private property within the city limits. So then the question is, what does aggressive mean? And I apologize ahead of time, I'm gonna go through several slides for the definition of aggressive. That's currently in twenty-one dash sixty-one of the ordinance. There's six different ways that aggressive, the word aggressive, could come into play and meet the requirements of the, of the ordinance. The first is intentionally or recklessly making any physical contact with or touching another person in the course of the solicitation without the person's consent. Now, this would already be a crime of battery, but that's the first condition of aggressive. Second is following the person being solicited. That's the key, following the person if, that's an important if, that conduct is intended to or is likely to cause a reasonable person to fear imminent bodily harm or the commission of a criminal act upon property in the person's possession, or is intended to or is reasonably likely to intimidate the person being solicited into responding affirmatively to the solicitation. Now, you're gonna see those two things kind of repeat through the definition, but this first one is doing either one of those while following the person. The next way it could be aggressive panhandling is continuing to solicit within five feet of the person being solicited after the person has made a negative response, if continuing the solicitation is intended to or likely to cause a reasonable person to fear imminent bodily harm or the commission of a criminal act upon property in the person's possession, or as intended or as reasonably like, intended to or as reasonably likely to intimidate the person being solicited into responding affirmatively to the solicitation. So following the person, continuing to solicit within five feet after they've already had a negative response, doing these other things. The next one is intentionally or recklessly blocking the safe or free passage of the person being solicited, or requiring the person or the driver of a vehicle to take evasive action to avoid physical contact with the person making the solicitation. And it has a little caveat that acts authorized as an exercise of one's constitutional right to picket or legally protest, and acts authorized by a business license pursuant to those sections of our code shall not constitute obstruction of pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Two more. Intentionally or recklessly using obscene or abusive language or gestures. Now, it's important that in and of itself, using obscene or abusive language is technically protected by the, or is protected by the First Amendment, except when there's a line that's crossed. And so if they use obscene or abusive language that is intended to or likely to cause a reasonable person to fear imminent bodily harm, or the commission of a criminal act upon property in the person's possession, or words intended to or reasonably likely to intimidate the person into responding affirmatively to the solicitation. It's important on all these, you have to have that first part and one of the, the second parts. And the last one is approaching the person being solicited in a manner that is intended to or is likely to cause a reasonable person to fear imminent bodily harm, or the commission of a criminal act upon property in the person's possession, or intended to or is reasonably likely to intimidate the person being solicited into responding affirmatively to the solicitation. So that's the definition of aggressive, and that was the first prohibition under this ordinance, which is aggressive solicitation, whether it's on private property or public property. Now, the next one is on private property specifically. And keep in mind that there are as far less protections on private property, as you would imagine, than there are on public property. So this one is solicitation is prohibited as follows. On private property, if the owner, tenant, or lawful occupant has asked the person not to solicit on the property, or has posted a sign clearly indicating that solicitations are prohibited on the property. That's pretty clear cut. This is one of the things that private property can do now to, if they're dealing with issues of solicitation on their property, especially aggressive solicitation, is they can prohibit it entirely on their property, their private property. And the third one is from any occupant, or solicitation is prohibited, from any occupant of a motor vehicle that is in traffic on a public street, if the solicitation would cause any person, and this is the important part, to walk upon a portion of the roadway not clearly designated and or marked for pedestrian foot, foot traffic, on sidewalks and other places that are considered traditional public forum. We cannot regulate speech like solicitation. But once they step into the lanes of traffic, it becomes a public safety issue, especially on our roadways where cars are going faster. And we've seen those issues, and I'll talk about it in a second with some of our pedestrian crash stats, especially fatalities, but this is really what we're concerned with, is when it either causes the vehicle to do something that could cause a crash, or the pedestrian themselves could, could be injured from their actions. That goes into our next one, which is twenty-one dash sixty-three, which is standing or loitering on or near a street or highway. And this kind of echoes this last point from twenty-one dash sixty-two. But the purpose of this section is to prevent dangers to persons and property, to prevent traffic delays, and to avoid interference with traffic flow. Roadways that have center medians often are designed to handle specific traffic flow problems. Any delay or distraction may interfere with traffic planning and may present dangerous roadway conditions for drivers and pedestrians. So what this one prohibits is, it shall be unlawful for any person to stand or loiter on a street or highway when such activity, one, causes the person performing the activity to enter onto the traveled portion of a street or highway. That's the portion, again, it'll be at the end of the definition where road, or vehicles actually go to travel, so the places, the lanes where vehicles travel. The person performing the activity is located such that vehicles cannot move into a legal parking area safely. They're blocking that area. See, it shall be unlawful for any person to stand or loiter on any highway included in the interstate system, including any entrance to or exit from the highway. This is on the actual off-ramp or the on-ramp, not on sidewalks or areas that are not in the roadway itself. And for purposes of this section, the traveled portion of the street or highway shall mean the portion of the road normally used by moving motor vehicle traffic. Just to show some, some crash data on what we've seen, a concerning trend with pedestrians in the last four years especially, we've seen the number of pedestrian crashes overall increase fairly drastically, but even more concerning the number of fatal pedestrian crashes, from a fairly consistent number back when I was in traffic in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, very consistent around two, three at the most that we would see, and now we have numbers as high as seven. And most of those pedestrian fatalities are caused by pedestrian enters a roadway in a place other than a crosswalk or that's a place that's designated for pedestrian. And so one of the things we're trying to address is to limit these types of injury crashes or fatalities. And oftentimes, drugs are associated with these crashes, and I think that's another reason we've seen the increase, because fentanyl arriving in Los Cruces kind of overlays with that as well. Moving along, I'm gonna get right into the shopping cart ordinance, which is the one that has a little bit more detail to it. This is a new ordinance, again, not an existing ordinance that we're modifying. And there's several things we're trying to accomplish with a shopping cart ordinance. When this was first brought up, and it was originally brought up by our community outreach officers, who really are just in the trenches every day, dealing with some of these issues, and they saw the need for it, and it sounded petty or minor, how much of an effect would this really have, but the more you look at it and the more we see, the more I've examined it, I truly believe that it would have a positive effect, and I'll explain why here in a few slides. But abandoned shopping carts in the city can potentially hazard the health and safety of the public, interfere with pedestrian and vehicular traffic. We've had many shopping carts in roadways, and create a public nuisance. The accumulation of abandoned carts on public and private property tends to reduce property values and promote blight and deterioration, which results in a public nuisance. And I wish it was limited in scope, but I'll show you some of the projects we've done, which, if you saw the town hall or watched it, you kind of already know what those numbers are, but it doesn't take a lot of time to gather a significant amount of carts that are left throughout our city. And I gave this anecdote the other day as well, but I worked a couple hours last week in the evening, to walk in a small desert area between a residential and a commercial area, not looking for shopping carts, but I came across two shopping carts full of property, nobody around, full of trash, and not even looking for them. They ultimately make our problem and our problems in the city appear much worse. And this perception is not helpful for anyone. Oftentimes, the closer we can get perception to reality of those two things to match, the better it is for everybody when we're making decisions, whether it's those that are homeless, the service providers, the police, the public, the businesses. When we're dealing with the facts, we can come up with solutions that are meaningful and actually have a positive effect. When perception is way off from reality, we tend to do a whole lot of yelling and screaming and not accomplish much because we're not starting from an accurate place. And I already gave this away if you saw the town hall, but what I, I asked the people at the town hall to raise their fingers for how many people they thought were in this encampment, and I got a number between four and ten. I think four was the lowest I saw. And the reality is, this was ultimately one person's encampment. There's multiple shopping carts that are there. You can see the one in the front. There's several in the back. And when someone drives by this, including me, if I drove by this, I would think there's five, six, ten, twelve people in this encampment, when the reality is just one person. And so that perception being way out of scope with reality is not helpful for us or anybody else in the city. How bad is the problem for us to understand the need for this ordinance? We have to understand the extent of the problem in the city. So I'm gonna play a quick video, no sound. What I want you to do, if possible, is try to count the number of carts that are involved in this video. A couple of things. The answer is fourteen, for those that are wondering, fourteen carts. On the left is a picture of all the resources that took to clean up this area, including Mono E Mono. And this is all from one person. This is one person with fourteen carts, full of some property, some personal property, but also a lot of stuff that's objectively trash, which to them may be property, but ultimately, I'll talk about in a minute. It makes it very difficult to help this person because they are tied like an anchor to this property, to this trash, and it makes it hard to move them anywhere, including to services. But when people pass by and they see fourteen carts full of stuff, the perception, of course, is not that there's one person there. It's that there's five, ten, fourteen people there. I'm gonna go through a series of photos, and I'm not gonna spend a ton of time. These are all from Los Cruces over the last, uh, these are from the two thousand and twenty operation, but most of them are fairly recent. And just to, to highlight the extent of the problem, several operations have been done by our community outreach section, along with codes and other, both city departments, Mono E Mono and other organizations, to try to clean up the abandoned carts. One of the first projects was in August of two thousand and twenty, lasted only five hours, and they recovered a hundred and fifty-two carts valued at fifty thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars, based on the estimates from the different retailers on what they paid for each cart. A significant amount in five hours. And there's been others between, but I highlight one of the first projects and the last, just kind of bookmark the issue. This operation of last week, August, or I'm sorry, April twenty-third, lasted only two hours. And in those two hours, with the help of all these different organizations and departments, a hundred and sixty-two carts were collected in two hours valued at thirty-two thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. And here's a breakdown of where we saw those carts come from. Again, these are all abandoned carts. These are not taken from anybody, but these are abandoned carts very often full of trash and with debris and trash all around them. And so like streets and public works, they're not really doing anything with the carts, but they have to come in along with Mono E Mono to help pick up all the trash and debris and fill truckloads of it around these areas. Get into the details of the ordinance. I'm gonna try to simplify it as much as possible. Of course, with questions, we can get into any part of it, but the ordinance sets up several requirements for retail businesses that utilize shopping carts. So some of those requirements are a fixing and identifying sign on the, each cart. And what that sign does, it tells us which business it is, which specific location or store number, and a contact number for pickup if it's found abandoned. The other thing they have to do is submit a shopping cart plan every two years, which has to be approved through community development. And I'll go into kind of the details of what the shopping cart plan entails, but there is a caveat, unless they apply for an exemption and are approved, which I'll also talk about in a second. And then in that case, they would not have to do the shopping cart plan. Shopping cart plan has several different components. The first is kind of identifying and information, contact information for the business. The next is the number of carts that they have and how they intend to comply with the sign requirement on the carts. The next is public notices. It's important, obviously, for public education, so that could be a number of things. Signs on the shop, shopping cart corrals that say, if you take it, it's unlawful, it's a crime on the business itself. They could do printing on receipts. There's a bunch of different ways to comply, and usually a combination is best. The next part is a loss prevention or description of the measures that business owners will implement to prevent the removal of carts. This can include security guards that are outside in the parking lots to help prevent people from taking carts. It can include surveillance trailers like we have, that some of the retailers have. And again, it's a combination of things, preferably, that help reduce the number of carts taken. The next part is a cart retrieval plan for them to collect off-site shopping carts at least once a week and within three days of notification by the city of an abandoned cart. And then the last part is how they kind of implement all the parts before that. The exemptions, and this is an important part, there are businesses in town already that would qualify for these exemptions, would essentially have to do nothing other than apply for the exemption and get it approved every two years. In order to qualify for an exemption, both parts have to be met. So number one is that they have effective restraints that prohibit any carts from exiting the premise. So examples generally are poles attached to the carts. I'll show a picture. I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. Electric wheel locks, where there's a perimeter system. If the cart passes a point in the parking lot, the wheels lock, and it makes it difficult to roll that cart. Courtesy clerks, which is something that Save Mart, which is one of our smaller grocers, but already does, they have somebody that escorts everybody to their car, helps them load the groceries, and then brings the cart back. So Save Mart, if this is passed, would have to do essentially nothing other than every two years to supply for their exemption and get it approved. The business also has to secure all shopping carts during the hours the business is closed by storing them inside or locking them outside, or finding some other way to prevent people from taking them after hours. So both parts have to be done to qualify for an exemption. So some examples, a lot of the smaller stores like Dollar General, Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, a lot of those stores where people aren't taking or getting a ton of stuff, might be able to put the poles on there to prevent them going into the parking lot, whereas a lot of other stores, people need to get their groceries to the, the car, and the cart is the way they do that. So the wheel lock system is another possible option, and then, of course, attendance, like I mentioned, with Save Mart. The second part of the ordinance, really all in one, but the other prohibitions that are in the ordinance, is it makes it unlawful for a person to do these things. Remove a shopping cart from the retail premise where it is used for shopping purposes. Possess an off-site shopping cart not subject to an exception identified in this article. Abandon an off-site shopping cart, or alter, convert, or tamper with a shopping cart, or remove any part or portion thereof, or remove, obliterate, or alter any identifying sign, mark, or serial number on a shopping cart. Now, it is important to point out, and I'll mention it again, that all these things are technically already illegal. Not even technically, they are already illegal, either under possession of stolen property, larceny, or criminal damage to property. So these are not new crimes per se, they're already illegal. The enforcement part of the ordinance allows for enforcement of the ordinance under several different provisions of municipal code that are permitted by law, which includes revocation of an exemption under subsection five, the exemptions we just talked about, the requirement that the owner abide by conditions of a new shopping cart plan, with terms to be dictated by the administrator. The administrator comes from community development. Prosecution as a petty misdemeanor under the authority of Los Cruces Municipal Code one dash ten. Imposition of a fine of not less than one hundred dollars, no more than five hundred dollars for a first violation, two hundred dollars, no more than five hundred dollars for a second violation within a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day period, and five hundred dollars for each additional violation within a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day period. Procedures for abatement of a nuisance under sections eighteen dash five and eighteen dash seven of the Los Cruces Municipal Code. A civil action for enforcement, including to abate a public nuisance by injunctive relief or other, any other court order, and proceedings for revocation of a use or site development permit if applicable. And one of the things that's important to mention is that a business license in Los Cruces is contingent on not being in violation of other municipal ordinances or codes. So if there's a violation of the shopping cart plan, at some point, that could be a remedy as well. Another caveat that's in the ordinance itself, it says, at the discretion of the sentencing judge, any person convicted on this article may perform community service in lieu of any fine imposed by the court. And by community service, one of the options under, for community service in New Mexico is treatment, whether for mental illness or substance use, or both. So that would be ultimately the goal, is that this is a mechanism, if necessary, to plug people into services that need them the most. So that's the ordinance, the nuts and bolts of it. Why is this ordinance important? I mentioned already that theft is already a crime. We could take enforcement action right now. If that was the goal, the goal was enforcement, we could do that right now. That's not the goal. The goal is to have a holistic approach, to try to make Los Cruces better, and enforcement by itself will not just accomplish that. It has to be a number of things together. Another point that I think is really important, as soon as we justify and excuse any crime, we compromise the entire system. And we are talking about something that is already a crime. It's theft. If somebody went into somebody's open garage or carport and stole a wagon to carry their property around town, I don't think we would excuse that. I think we would consider that a crime, and that there should be some action taken to return that property to the owner. If someone went into Walmart and stole, shoplifted, a wagon, the same type of wagon, to carry property, we'd probably see that a little bit differently than the shopping cart itself, but ultimately, the crime is the same, except for the fact that the shopping cart is actually worth more than the wagon itself. worth more than the wagon itself. There are several businesses with no carts, a few carts available. It may seem like a minor point, and it is just one of the reasons for this ordinance, but even Walmart, sometimes, it's difficult to find carts because of the number of carts that are taken from Walmart. You saw how many were recovered in that two-hour period just from Walmarts. But when people go to a business and there's no carts available, it is something that impacts both the business and the customer, which is our citizens. It makes a bad situation in our city appear even worse, and this is a negative for all parties. I already hit on it, but I do think the perception of the problems we face, being inflated, is not a good thing for us. We do have issues with homelessness, we do have issues with crime, substance use, untreated mental illness, but we need to try to have that perception in check with reality, and a lot of times, these things inflate it. Shopping carts contribute to blight and unhealthy conditions. We do find shopping carts that are just by themselves, empty, but a lot of times, what we find is a shopping cart full of trash, surrounded by trash and other items that are hazardous, biohazards, and so there's this, it goes along with the territory. When we find abandoned shopping carts, we tend to find a lot of trash and debris associated with it. Shopping carts full of stuff limit the mobility of those who are homeless and their access to services. I mentioned it earlier, but I really believe it, and I think it's a point that's overlooked, that when you have someone, especially those who suffer from mental illness or addiction, meth addiction, oftentimes schizophrenia is associated with hoarding behavior, and so they will have those 14 carts full of cardboard and other trash, that to them is property. I've seen it before where I've had people take trash bags out of trash cans and store it in their shopping cart and take it with them for days, because that's their property. But ultimately, what that does is become an anchor to try to get them to the services. When you have someone with 14 carts and they're five miles from Community Hope, where we can get them services or any other service provider, good luck getting them those five miles with 14 carts, it's very difficult. If enforcement action is taken, which is not the first course of action, is ultimately an opportunity to plug them into treatment through municipal courts, very soon to be SOS program. And that is, again, not the first course of action, but if that is the end result for somebody, then hopefully, it's still an opportunity to plug them into the services that they would not get on their own. And at that point, I hope some good can come out of it. And I have a lot of confidence in Judge Filosa, and I do want to say that on the record, that he's already doing what he can within the framework, but I think very soon with the addition of the case manager and a few compliance personnel, ankle monitoring is a part of it because that allows us to have some options on pre-trial release, but I'm hopeful that that will be a mechanism to help a lot of these people that we see over and over and over, especially for the petty crimes. Some final thoughts, this is not about punishing people who are homeless, it's not about criminalizing homelessness, it's criminalizing crime, it's criminalizing theft. There are options if a cart is taken from someone, working with our nonprofits, and as we do this, a lot of times, it's gonna be operation-based. Patrol officer, if they pass by somebody with a cart, if this is passed, is not generally gonna have the time to stop and try to deal with that, whether they want it to or not. So it's gonna be a targeted effort with community outreach codes, Mono Imano and others, to try to address this, and that could be a holistic approach when we do it, so that we have resources, when we take the cart, deal with that person, but that could be outreach team from Community of Hope, that could be potentially personnel from FIRE based on time and personnel, and try to even offer an alternative for their property, for their essential property, so they have a mechanism to carry it around. One of the goals of the ordinance, one of the main goals of the ordinance, is to limit the hoarding of trash that contributes to blight, but it also impairs people's access to services and mobility, which I've mentioned several times, but I wanted to end on that point. And the question is, how did these people get to their service appointments? Either they leave their property there, which oftentimes is not there when they return, or they're afraid to leave it, or they tried to tow this around with them across town, and it becomes that anchor to them getting help and doing better for themselves. At this point, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Chief Story, thank you for your presentation. This time, any members of council have any questions? Counsel Fuentes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Story. I have a series of questions. I think that the last slide you presented, excuse me, no, 55. You indicate that this is not creating a new crime or criminalizing homelessness. Now, if someone is to pay a fine, and that person is homeless, and that fine isn't paid, what happens to that person?
Well, through municipal court, the judge has discretion on what fines are imposed for any crime, any petty misdemeanor in municipal court. So he also has discretion, or they have discretion, whether or not they issue a bench warrant or they issue another summons, so ultimately, that discretion falls on the judge.
So what if a bench warrant is issued, what happens to that person if that person is found?
Then they are arrested on the bench warrant.
They're arrested and...
And brought before the judge.
And they're arrested, and then what happens after they're arrested?
Good point. And Mayor, Counsel Fuentes, Mr. Douglas, our acting city attorney, for a failure to pay...
Yes.
The first thing they get is a summons and a notice appearing in court before a warrant is issued. So failure to appear is treated slightly differently versus a failure to pay.
Well, failure to appear and failure to pay, what happens? Are they incarcerated after that? If they're truant, if there's a warrant out for their arrest, what happens if they are found at that point?
If they're found with any warrant for their arrest, the warrant is served, they're brought before the judge, and the judge determines whether they're released or not, which generally speaking, they are released.
Well, generally speaking, but what is the possibility if that person is not released at that point? What happens to that person?
As opposed to any other crime, Counselor?
No, as a, no, no, specific to this.
This would be treated as any other petty misdemeanor under the municipal code, so whether it was a shoplifting or this type of theft, it would be essentially treated the same, but the discretion is the judge's.
So what if someone has racked up a bunch of fines and they're not paid? What happens at that point? I mean, the person is a quote, "repeat offender" unquote, what happens to that person?
Well, the goal is to get them engaged with the court, I'm sorry, Mayor, Counsel Fuentes, the goal is to get them engaged with the court. As long as they're engaged with the court, the court works with them, and that could be all kinds of things. They, again, community service in lieu, Judge Filosa is an advocate of that, so as long as they are appearing, he can take all the fines and make it into community service or treatment. The goal is obviously not to try to get someone who doesn't have anything to pay the court. The goal is to try to address the crime itself and hopefully get them the treatment that they need.
Chief Story, is there any other municipality, is there a municipality that you know of that has been successful specifically with what you're proposing? Did you find any other municipalities that have these, this ordinance?
There's many municipalities, especially in California, that have shopping cart ordinances, and they all look slightly different. Some are more effective than others, some are not effective at all. We tried to model this one after the ones that are more effective.
Is there any chance for, any possibility for incarceration?
The only time there'd be incarceration is under two circumstances. One, if there's another crime committed that warrants a physical arrest, which is an important point I didn't mention, in Las Cruces or in New Mexico in general, for non-violent misdemeanors, there are not physical arrests, it's either a criminal citation or summons. So this, like all other non-violent misdemeanors, the person is not going to jail unless they commit some other crime that is a physical arrest, like they batter the officer, or they batter somebody else in the commission of the solicitation or the shopping cart violation, or if they fail to appear.
If they fail to appear, they face the possibility of being incarcerated.
Yes.
And how would that person, that homeless person, receive notice of, to appear?
Generally, they are sent to 999 West Amador, the Community of Hope campus is where most people get their mail.
They have a, where do they receive their mail?
999 West Amador, Community of Hope.
But that's a presumption, isn't it? I mean, I don't think every homeless person goes to that 999 Amador.
Mayor, Counsel Fuentes, that's an option for anybody to get, to receive their mail there, but ultimately, these issues you're describing are issues for any crime, including the hundreds that the person I exhibited earlier commits, who's also homeless. So those issues we have to deal with, whether it's shoplifting, battery, criminal damage to property, or any other crime, same issues.
My concern, Chief, is that, that, you know, there's that Supreme Court case right now, well, God knows when it's gonna be heard, because they move slower than molasses, but the Johnson v. versus Grants Pass in Oregon, and that one is going to look at the criminalization and look into whether there's a violation of the cruel and unusual punishment part of the Constitution. And cruel being, you know, that's going to be up to the justices to decide what constitutes cruel, but from where I'm sitting right now, looking at this, my heart goes out to the homeless, and there but for the grace of God go I. You never know, you just never know. And I find it a bit harsh because I think, and you did touch on mental competency, but somehow, I find it very difficult to accept. It's not to say that there's a problem, it doesn't, you know, I recognize there's a problem, I'm not sure this is the solution. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, pardon me.
Yes, go ahead.
And the Grants, Mayor, Counsel Fuentes, the Grants Pass case is really apples to oranges with this. I mean, essentially, it would be same as legalizing shoplifting because somebody's homeless, it's theft, we're talking about, it's larceny. So, thank you.
Excuse me, Chief, in both cases, the end result is incarceration, the potential for incarceration, so irrespective of, irrespective of the quote, "crime misdemeanor," or whatever, there is a difference. There is a difference, but not in the outcome, not in how it's going to affect a person. And that's my point. I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody likes the blight, but then, you know, if we don't like the problem, we should all work to come up with a good solution. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Counsel Corren.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I'm curious on the one that you highlighted, if one of these was among those charges, how would it be different?
If one of these, I'm sorry, Mayor, Counsel Corren.
If a citation for panhandling or having a cart were among the things that were on the list of the person that you highlighted at the beginning, how would the outcomes be different?
They wouldn't necessarily be different, but they ultimately, hopefully, will be an opportunity to plug those people into services. Any of those petty misdemeanors would be an opportunity to plug them into services. But at the same time, my point before is, as soon as we excuse it altogether, a crime, and theft is a crime, and I'm not sure anybody's arguing that theft's not a crime, then we compromise the whole system. I can't control, obviously, what happens after the fact, but we clearly have breakdowns at many levels in our New Mexico criminal justice system, but from where I'm sitting, that doesn't mean that we don't do our part, I don't do my part, to try to address the issues where I can.
Thank you, I appreciate your input.
Please, if you could hold it down, please. Anyone else? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for the town hall, I appreciated the presentation from your staff, both DC Wudena and Lieutenant Bradley. So thank you for that. I just, I want to read something real quick from an article before I go into some of my questions and some of my suggestions, so that you and all of you have an understanding of where I'm coming from on this. I sent this article to Brad, to yourself, Chief, and to Connie a while ago, but it's called "Nowhere to Go: Homelessness Among Formerly Incarcerated People." And it's a big research, it's a ton of research on, there's a piece that talks about the revolving door and homelessness, and I think people in our community love to talk about the revolving door of crime, and so I want to talk about that as it relates to homelessness. This says, "We find that people experiencing cycles of incarceration and release, otherwise known as the revolving door of incarceration, are also more likely to be homeless. People who have been to prison just once experience homelessness at a rate nearly seven times higher than the general public. But people who have been incarcerated more than once have rates 13 times higher than the general public. In other words, people who have been incarcerated multiple times are twice as likely to be homeless as those who are returning from their first prison term." There's more research on here about than the racial aspects of it, and how black and brown folks, then the rates are even higher for them. The next piece says, "Unfortunately, being homeless makes formerly incarcerated people more likely to be arrested and incarcerated again, thanks to policies that criminalize homelessness. As law enforcement agencies aggressively enforce offenses such as sleeping in public spaces, which is what Grants Pass is trying to criminalize, panhandling, and public urination, some might argue shopping carts could be included here, not to mention other low-level offenses that are more visible when committed in public. Formerly incarcerated people are unnecessarily funneled back through their revolving door." So, you know, I think often I get criticisms about, I think that my frame of work and when I approach issues of homelessness, I think people often think of my compassion as a liability, but really, I'm just, this is my frame of work, right? This is my philosophy, that I, as a social worker, I deeply understand that once people have a criminal record, it is, they're much, much harder to find housing, much, much harder to find jobs, and those kinds of things, right? So the barriers to entry to housing just become incredibly more difficult. And so I do have concerns about the criminalization of some of these pieces, but I just have some questions before I get into some suggestions, Chief. There's technically three things you presented, right? 2162, 2163, and then the shopping carts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you just talk a little bit about what the enforcement will look like for those things, like maybe for the aggressive panhandling, like once a call comes in, somebody, I'm assuming it's, you're gonna wait for somebody to make a 911 call and said, "This just happened to me at the Albertson's parking lot."
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, unless it's observed by the officer, they see behavior that's clearly aggressive panhandling, they could obviously take action, but a couple things. One, when it comes to aggressive panhandling, it's a little bit different than, say, even solicitation, I want to stay away from panhandling, solicitation on private property, where there could be an educational process beforehand. Part of that's supposed to be the signs, part of that's trying to get cooperation from the person without having to take enforcement action. When it comes to aggressive panhandling, depending on the behavior and the cooperation of the victim, there may be enforcement action as a criminal citation right then. If it's violent behavior, let's say the person punched them, threw something at them, hit them, there might be a physical arrest in that case, more than likely. I'm not sure if that answers.
Yeah, yes, and then on the roadway, for example, are you sort of waiting, is this when an officer sees a person on the roadway, is when an enforcement will happen?
So on that one, Mayor Protem, Mayor, Mayor Protem, that one would be a lot more education as a change in the ordinance, so making contact, ensuring that people understand where they can be and can't be. And again, we can only regulate that behavior, time, manner, and place, under those very strict guidelines. And so if someone's on a sidewalk soliciting without being aggressive, that's not gonna be criminalized under this ordinance or any ordinance. But if the person's entering the roadway, depending on what the behavior is, more than likely, it'd be education first, after a period of education with the update to the ordinance, then there may be enforcement action taken if necessary. But again, that would be a citation or a summons.
Okay. And then the shopping cart ordinance can, so I heard you a couple times say that the officer potentially could take the shopping cart, so what will that actually look like? There'll be, yeah, I'll just let you answer that.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, again, you know, the way I envision it, if it passes, is to develop these, these projects where we have all the resources we need to actually deal with it. So a patrol officer, our call volume is incredibly high in this jurisdiction, higher than most, so a patrol officer's going to a domestic or a burglary in progress, they're not gonna stop and deal with that when they see it. It takes time, it's gonna take 30, 40 minutes to deal with it, because their property is their property, so if something is property, it has to stay with them, we're not gonna discard their property, nor could we legally, and that means finding a way to balance those two things, and there's different options, like I talked about. So when we do the projects, A, it allows us to have more resources in place so that we can address all these nuances of the ordinance. I'm not sure if that answers it, but...
What, what pieces of the, these three that you proposed are new?
The, obviously, the shopping cart ordinance is new in its entirety as far as how it's, that ordinance doesn't exist.
Right, the asking for businesses to submit a plan and those kinds of things. The enforcement of, that aside, the enforcement is not new, right? You already said shoplifting is already a crime.
Right. So, Mayor, Mayor Protem, again, if the ordinance failed and we wanted to just do enforcement, we could do that, we could go out and just start charging people with receiving stolen property or possession of stolen property. That's not the goal in of itself, because we talked about at the town hall, enforcement is... is a piece in this and it has to be a piece in it, but it is definitely not the only part of it. And we cannot arrest or side our way out of any problem, including this one. But if we exclude that as an option, we also can't solve the problem. I think we've seen that in many other places, including outside of the United States. So there has to be this balance between the two. And that's why this holistic approach is what I would prefer because it allows us a lot more opportunity to reduce the number of carts taken, have the businesses help us help them. And then there's less people that are even in the predicament where they have a shopping cart with their stuff in it in the first place.
Thanks, Chief. Couple more questions. On the businesses, have you, have you or any of your team spoken to folks at Walmart or Albertson's or any of these folks that are having their carts taken at a higher rate?
Yes, actually, Mayor, Mayor Protem, I spoke with one of the managers of one of our local Walmart stores and they were in favor of it. If you would have asked them maybe a year or two years ago, they probably would not have been. But it's gotten to the point where there's many times where they don't have the carts. They're ordering so many shopping carts. Monetarily, the business is actually gonna save money, whether that's a smaller business or Walmart. And so all it is is a little bit of time and inconvenience to implement this plan. But at this point, the ones I've spoke to are in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. I do, you know, I do have a lot of criticisms about Walmart and honestly I have little sympathy for them and their stolen property. I think they, perhaps if they hired more people and stopped automating so much of their services, they would have more people in their parking lots picking up the shopping carts that people leave behind, but that's for another work session. I do, I do hope that they come to the table. I think that as, when we talk about, if someone comes into my yard and steals something from me, we want to try to prevent those things. But if someone comes into my yard, I'm also gonna make sure to do things that prevent that in the future, right? And I think Walmart, specifically places like Walmart and some of these other bigger franchises, I think have the resources to do anti-theft measures and they choose not to. Instead, they choose to rely on our local police enforcement to try to do that for them. So I want to push back against them a little bit that I think they do have a lot more responsibility in, when it comes to this effort. I do want to note just a couple of things before I continue with my questions that Manui Mano, for those of you who don't know who are in the room, Manui Mano is a day laborer program out of Community of Hope that takes people who are currently unhoused and gives them work to go clean up areas that have been left for encampments. And so I think there's all this, there's a lot of narratives and a lot of dominant narratives about unhoused people that they don't want to work and those things are just not always true. And so I did want to just note that Manui Mano is an incredible program. I have some questions for Brad as well, if that's okay. Brad, do you know how far away we are from SOS being in place?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem. In my conversations with the municipal court, it's my understanding that we are not very far away at all. My best guess would be probably two or three months away.
Two or three months away?
We're getting very, very close. The municipal court now has a case manager on staff. They've hired, I believe, six additional new staff members that are traditionally what we would think of as clerks, but they will be assisting that case manager with helping to plug some of our more vulnerable population into services around town with our local partners. And so, by the way, that's a guess, two or three months. I would say six months on the outside, just based on my conversations with municipal court staff, but I do think that it is happening very, very soon and I for one am optimistic about it.
Okay, thank you. I think if, if the goal of these is really to sort of push people to municipal court so that they can get in services and the goal is not to criminalize, then I would ask that if, shall this happen, that it be implemented once SOS Court is ready?
Noted, Mayor Protem. If I may briefly respond to something that was said earlier?
Sure, go ahead.
Counselor Corin brought up an excellent question earlier, and I'm not sure if I will even answer it as eloquently as Chief Story did, but her question, Counselor, your question was, "If this ordinance was enacted, what would be different about this person that had 14 carts?" And my answer, and I'm not speaking for Chief Story.
I was asking about the person who broke the window, not the 14 cart person.
I misunderstood your question.
Sorry. I understand the context for the cart person. I was, I was asking a different question.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, sorry.
No, I misunderstood, but my hope would be that it wouldn't happen because we would have the onus on the business owners either to take some ownership, no pun intended, or responsibility for their own property. That's the whole purpose of the shopping cart plan. And also, as Chief Story said, enforcement is not the primary goal here. Plugging people into treatment and services would be the primary goal.
Brad, in your experience as an attorney and being in many courts probably, right now is using treatment as an expansion of community service?
Yes.
How often are you seeing that happen?
I am seeing it more and more often within the last year since the New Mexico Supreme Court made a ruling that treatment is an acceptable substitute for community service, whether that be substance abuse counseling, mental health treatment, or a combination of both. I am seeing it much more often, on a weekly basis, I would say.
And for that to work, the judge has to come to that conclusion, right? The judge has to propose that, but then the person also has to agree to it, correct?
That's right. That's right, Mayor Protem. So let's say hypothetically, someone was fined in the amount, and this goes to a point that Counselor Flores brought up earlier, really good question also. What would happen if someone were fined, let's say $200 through the municipal court? Well, we always have to have an ability to pay hearing. Oftentimes that would occur at a sentencing on a dispositional hearing for a criminal offense, let's say. So let's say someone is fined $200 and that person says, "Your Honor, I cannot pay $200. You're fining me $200. For me, I can pay $200, me personally. For some people, $200, or $200 might as well be $200,000." And we understand that. And so what we would hope is to impose, after an ability to pay hearing, community service in lieu of that $200 fine. And if that person so chooses with the assistance of our new case manager, we could plug them into services that would satisfy that community service obligation. And hopefully, we'd be treating the person as an individual rather than just seeking to punish conduct. We're trying to make sure that the conduct doesn't happen in the future.
Brad, right now, there is also something in an ordinance that says if you fail to pay, that's an additional $100, correct?
Not if you fail to pay, Mayor Protem. If you fail to appear for a court appearance, let's say there's a pretrial conference and notice goes out to that person, let's say at their home address, let's say that we're not dealing with an unhoused person, just me. Let's say I get a citation through the municipal court. I will get a notice at my house, at my, or at my mailing address, let's say if I had a P.O. box. And let's say I get that notice and I don't show up to court. Well, then a bench warrant, more than likely, would issue for my arrest, and there is a $100 administrative fee for processing the bench warrant that I believe as of right now, only this governing body can waive. I don't believe that the presiding judge has the authority to forgive that.
Correct. I think for me, that would be another important missing piece of the puzzle as we move forward. I brought this up during council comments before and I think would love to hear from municipal court staff about what this looks like because it just creates a debtors' court. And for someone who may use 999 West Salvador as an address, just to have an address, that doesn't mean that they're consistently checking for mail there.
That's, that's right, Mayor Protem. It is a challenge that we face on an almost daily basis, and this is not just with regard to some people that we think is homeless. There are many different, as you know, there are many different, I don't want to say levels, but types of unhoused scenarios or home insecurity. And so some people might have a home one month and the next month they don't. And then the month after that, they might stay with a friend or a family member. What I can tell you that we try to do in the municipal court is we try to make sure that this, these people, any person, gets noticed in as many ways as possible. Some people prefer to get their notice by email. You'd be shocked, or maybe you wouldn't be, on how many people, unhoused or otherwise, just simply prefer to get their notice via email. If they have a mailing address, it becomes much easier. I know the Community of Hope has been providing a great service with regard to receiving mail and being a willing recipient of people's mail. The challenge with that is they only hold it for so long. We can't expect them to hold it for a month or two months. So if someone doesn't come collect their mail after about a week, I think that they dispose of it. But we do, we hand deliver notices. So if someone comes to court in person and they have another hearing in 45 or 60 days, what we try to do is actually hand them physically a copy of their notice for their next hearing. Is it a perfect system? No, it's not, admittedly, but we do the best we can.
Thanks, Brad. And then with SOS Court, let's say a person, all things align and a person chooses, the judge says, "Yes, this person could definitely do community service or an extension, treatment or whatever." And that person chooses to do that. Does then the crime get removed from their record?
So, no, not automatically. So in New Mexico, oh, about four or five years ago now, we do now have an expungement process in New Mexico via statute. We did not always have that. So anytime you get arrested, if you are arrested, that is in a number of databases, whether it be an FBI database, our local database, et cetera. It would potentially show as dismissed, but would it still be on that person's record? Yes, it would unless they apply to the Third Judicial District Court for an expungement of their criminal record after a requisite time period. And there's nothing we could do about that. That's state statute.
Is that a free process? Can anybody do that or would I need to have an attorney to expunge?
They don't have to have an attorney. It would be much easier with an attorney. And so that's something that we might want to think about, reaching out to our nonprofits with regard to providing pro bono legal services. Every attorney in the state of New Mexico is encouraged, as Counselor Flores knows this bit, to provide so many hours each year of pro bono services. And so maybe that's something that we could attempt to organize.
So an expungement process isn't necessarily something easily accessible to everybody. You'd have to be pretty in the know.
For an attorney, it would be easy for a layperson. I think it would probably be somewhat confusing, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Brad. I see Chief coming up. I don't know if he had something to say about this.
I did, Mayor, Mayor Protem, thank you. And there's ultimately two parts of the SOS program. There's the diversion program, or part of it, and then there's the post-conviction. So really what we're talking about is the post-conviction. They've already been found guilty or they played no contest to one of these charges and then as a condition of essentially their probation, that their sentence is community service and treatment in lieu of that. But ultimately, the goal is to do the diversion program where
Right.
if someone's a candidate before it even gets to a conviction, they have the option of engage in this treatment program. And if successful, then the charge is dismissed outright and there's no conviction on their record at all.
Okay, thanks, Chief. I'll get into this diversion here in a second, but I think I, there's just a couple of things I wanted to add. I think there's this, you had this, this sort of narrative around perception versus reality. And for me, I think this is where I struggle with both of these ordinances because I think that from my professional experience, especially the shopping cart ordinance, I think is feeding more into perception of safety. I don't actually believe that it brings about real safety. And I think it's going to create a bunch of more barriers for unhoused people who are truly trying to seek services or will eventually be ready to seek services. And I think one of the things that worries me, many of these things worry me about this, but one of the things that worries me the most is that when the community who is here, who is really advocating and pushing for these things, begins to see that there's still people panhandling, like that's still an issue. There is serious poverty in this community. There is serious need for housing in this community. There's a serious need for mental health services in this community, right? And so when people continue to see that there's still people panhandling on the street, that people still are carrying their belongings, whether it's, whether it's their tent or their blanket or whatever it is, right? When people still see it, I think they're gonna come back and say, "You're not doing anything." And I don't want them to say that to you because I know your officers work really hard, but I know they're gonna say it to us and they're gonna say that we're tying your hands. They're gonna say, "City Council is tying your hands to be able to do your job." And I'm not asking you to answer that, Chief. I'm just posing that as a potential concern that I have as we go on and potentially implement this. That's one of the things, for sure. For me, diversion is incredibly important. I think, I don't know, I might be in the minority with my colleagues around some of these pieces. And so if, if they're gonna move forward, I have three asks for, as we move forward in creating these, so for you as well, Brad, but for city manager and yourself. One of them, I think it's in, as we approach people who are unhoused and have a shopping cart, or as we approach somebody who is potentially being aggressive in their solicitation, that there be a needs assessment conducted of that person, whether it's the officer or whoever it is that approaches that person. And I'd be happy to work with advocates, perhaps the new caseworker at municipal court to come up with what this would look like and to really understand what this person is going through. Because if, if our goal really is towards rehabilitation and diversion and to fix a problem, then I want to, I think it's important that we understand what that person is going through, whether it's housing needs, whether they qualify for benefits and they don't know it, whether it's a medical issue that immediately they might need something, whatever it is, to conduct a needs assessment. Number two, I would love to know whenever, if there's language that can be added around whenever possible, especially around aggressive panhandling for the use of the Light team. Something that for me has always been really important when it comes to diversion is that we pair the right first responder to the right emergency. And if we are encountering someone that has, who is already in an altered state, that potentially may have a mental health issue, and sometimes the presence of a uniform will escalate that, right? Like that is, that's just true for many folks. Nothing you may have done, just the presence of a law enforcement agent may increase the tension. And so whenever, whenever possible and if available, we know that our Project Light folks are incredibly busy and are responding to a ton of calls, but whenever possible, that Project Light is also, I want to say issued out, but that's the wrong word, that they're also calling, responding to that call. Thank you. And then the last thing that I really want to ask or that I deeply believe is necessary is for us to grow the community outreach team at Community of Hope. Right now, there are two folks that I wish we could clone into 100 people, but right now, those two folks are completely overwhelmed. But there are folks who deeply understand the experience of being unhoused, folks who have training in dealing with folks who have mental health issues, all of, like they have incredible training and right now, there's two people. And I really believe that if we increased that team, if we grew that team, they could be a good partner for law enforcement, they could be a good partner for municipal court. And so I would like to make an official request for the growth of that team. And I will even have a dollar amount for you. I think it's important that the folks who are doing that work also have better pay. I think it's incredibly difficult work and I would like to see them get an increase in their salary and I would like for the city to support that. So I, like I said, I would like to increase the existing outreach team with two new outreach staff. And then I would also like to increase our hotspot truck. I think the Manui Mano program has been incredibly successful for a long time and even more successful since we implemented a hotspot truck that is allowing for us to go into even private areas where there has been clearly an abandoned encampment that was there. And folks are picking up these things. And I think there would need to be a new, a purchase of a new truck. And so I would say $235,000 for the staff and then an additional money from that, so maybe $300,000 for an additional vehicle for Manui Mano. To me, I think as we continue with these, if we continue with something like this, I think, I deeply believe that we actually may, me making things worse. And that really concerns me. But as we move forward, I also want to make sure that there is as much harm reduction But as we move forward, I also want to make sure that there is as much harm reduction as possible. And I also, I want to come to the table and I want to be a good team player. I don't want to just say, no, I don't believe this, period. I want to come to the table, Chief, and I think you know that that's where I'm coming from. And I know that after this meeting, potentially, there'll be a lot of criticisms about what I had to say here today, but I, I'm a big supporter of the outreach court, of municipal court. In fact, I was the one that brought that idea to council and it's moved forward to what it is now. But I want to be able to bring some potential alternatives as well. So that would be my request. And I'm going to stop talking now because I can hear my voice getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Counselor Graham.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Story, Brad. Really appreciate it. This is a hard one. I understand deeply all of the concerns being brought up by my colleagues so far. I want to tell people in the public, I am receiving and reading your emails. Hopefully, you at least get from me a receipt acknowledged message so you know I've seen it, as we've said many times, but it always bears repeating. When we have something that we're going to vote on, we really can't engage a lot in discussion on it. And I want everyone to know that all of this, all of these voices are informing how I'm thinking about this. And as concerning as it is to think about how this can go wrong, I want to talk about how this can go right. Because to me, the reality is, a lot of the folks we're talking about are not getting services anyway. And as a city leader, I feel, I feel a deep sense of responsibility. I sometimes feel neglectful when I see people who I know are desperately in need of services. And if, if I'm too, if I'm too afraid to try something new, then I don't feel that I am necessarily doing my due diligence up here. So in terms of, to me and Chief, I think you would probably agree, the way this goes right is that an individual ends up in treatment, ends up in a better position than when they were first encountered. Can you talk a little bit about community partners with whom you've met on this, some conversations you've had? Where are we in terms of preloading the, as many players as possible to deal, to deal with this productively?
Mayor, Counselor Graham. Leading up to this, it's back to right after everything that happened in February, I met with Nicole about a number of issues, Nicole Martinez with the Community of Hope, and at least gave her a heads up that this is something that I was going to pursue, specifically the shopping cart ordinance. And I don't, obviously, I don't know that, I'd say she's supportive of it, but I think she's, if it passes, she's willing to be a partner to do it right, to do it the best way we can. So I spoke to Ms. Martinez, I spoke to Judge Velosa and municipal court staff. Again, the SOS program is a broad program for all of these petty misdemeanors, but this fits right in with the timing of that and the goals of what we're trying to accomplish. And so that includes diversion, first and foremost, if possible. If not, even a condition of a conviction to make sure that the result is treatment. And I do agree, it's a win-win for everybody if, if the city is cleaned up, there's less crime, there's less people being victimized, and the people who are suffering generally from mental illness and/or substance use actually get some help for once. Because that's only happening when someone is lucid enough to say, I need help, which unfortunately is not that often, not often enough at least. And those partners come together. Mano a mano, I will say, has been a great partner, especially with our community outreach section. They are hardworking, they do a lot of good in these areas where we have all this blight and trash. And so that'd be one of our partners, other city departments, parks and recreation, where we see a lot of these issues in our parks. And when I say everything's intertwined, everything is related, it really is. And there's all this carryover. That's why I do feel this ordinance would have a positive effect. And maybe, maybe not, I wouldn't have felt as strong about that two years ago, but when you go through the city and you really get out and you look at what's happening, it's such a significant issue that improving this will carry over into other things. I believe that.
Thank you, Chief. And I, so I think better in writing than I'm able to just speak off the cuff. And I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if this was the day that we're all going to kind of make our statements, but I did, I did write a little and I hope you guys will indulge me. I'm just going to read three quick paragraphs. And again, a lot of this is based on communication that I've received from the public, people reaching out with questions, with concerns, with support. And I want to acknowledge everything I'm hearing. So, "A protest I've heard consistently about the proposed ordinances is that they will increase engagement between police officers and some of our most vulnerable people. While this certainly will be the case, the alarm it causes presupposes that all interactions between law enforcement and homeless residents will be negative, and I do not believe this is the case. I believe in and have witnessed the overriding goodwill, concern, and professionalism of the Las Cruces Police Department. I understand that, like any policymaker, I cannot predict absolutely what all consequences of my decisions will be. But I trust that our officers will, in good faith, work to find the critical balance necessary to improve safety and security for all residents while also increasing the chance that those facing challenges like addiction and mental health issues will plug into available resources." So, just wanted to say that part. And I wrote a whole lot more, so, you know, if you're excited at a future session, I'll regale you, but, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor McClure.
I just have a quick question. Have we factored in how the special session might play into this, specifically the solicitation ordinance?
Mayor, Counselor McClure, it's difficult because I haven't seen an actual draft bill that would address panhandling. They're playing with the same rules that we are when it comes to the constitutionality of any type of solicitation or panhandling ordinance. So anything that's passed is going to have to follow that same framework that acknowledges those four kind of guardrails that I started with. So whatever they pass cannot be that different from what we're trying to pass here. And if they pass a state statute, it doesn't really affect our city ordinance because we, and we have the option to enforce either, which is what we have for most crimes, the state statute and municipal ordinance that mirror each other.
Thank you.
Counselor Matisse.
Chief Story, I just want to thank you very much for bringing this forward to review and hopefully pass. I think in the eight and a half years that I was in Santa Teresa, I really didn't see the blight and the unhealthy conditions and the unsafe conditions in Las Cruces. But in the last year and a half that I've been staying in Las Cruces and traveling and going to different businesses, talking to Burrell students, New Mexico State University students, we have the young, we have the old, we have the business people, we have people in the shopping centers that really appreciate your holistic, the way you're going to do this. It's very balanced. It takes care of the safety issue, takes care of the health issue, and I believe the businesses will thank you as well. If the city looks better, it will be more prosperous. If it's more prosperous, then we have more money, more groceries each coming in to help with the nonprofits, community help, mano a mano. It's all interconnected. If the business is full of blight, unsafe homicides, break-in windows, I just had this morning, I was at Las Nogales, a mimosa, and I just want to say thank you to your officer that serviced that call. But they just decided to just break into the house, break windows, and that's happening all throughout Las Cruces. So I think any step that we can take to make the city look safer, be safer, and actually take care of these people, because what we're doing, we're just letting them be on the street and no one's, no one's really caring about them, whether it's two carts, fourteen carts, fifteen carts, they're down and out and they're unhoused. And I, and I understand that. And we all have a very compassionate city. We do care about them. But I really like the approach that you're doing to care about them, to get them to treatment centers. And thank you.
I have one more thing.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I just have one more thing to add, but just a little bit to that, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's true that no one's caring for them. I think there's, there's a pretty significant community at Community of Hope and other places that are absolutely trying their best with the amount of resources that they have. There's just never enough resources. And I think that's one of the things that is important to understand is that resources can't just be towards enforcement, they have to be towards all the other things that address the root causes of what's ultimately happening here, which is poverty or trauma or substance use. The other thing that I, the last thing that I just want to say is, I want to pose a challenge to our community as well around looking at this holistically, Chief. I think that's really important and I always push for that. And one of the biggest pieces in this conversation of our unhoused neighbors, which by the way, folks at 999 West Amador, those, that's the street four, those are my constituents as well, right? But one of the biggest pieces to this puzzle is housing. And every single time there's a zoning request or anything, there's, there's this thing called a NIMBY, and it's often used to talk about people that, it's not in my backyard, people that often talk about not wanting, they don't want to see homeless folks, but they also don't want housing in their neighborhoods. And so I want to pose a gentle challenge to our community about becoming YIMBYs, about becoming, yes, in my backyard people, about becoming folks who also support housing. Because if, ultimately, if we don't have housing, we're never actually going to get to solve the problem. And DC Urena talked about this at the town hall around, we're not going to arrest our way out of this problem. And so I do want to, given that there's been recent pushback against something like amateur crossings, I do want to make sure that I'm also challenging our community to also be advocates for housing. Thank you.
Mayor. Mayor, can I add one question? Mayor, Mayor Protim. And I think that's kind of the goal, is that, that balanced approach. And I've mentioned it before when it comes to parenting, that you have to find the balance and that's what we're trying to accomplish. If, if there is no enforcement, there's no consequence. And as a parent, if your kids do something that there should be a consequence for and there's not, then it promotes other behavior and it tends to escalate and grow. At the same time, that has to be done with love, that has to be done with an amount of grace, some amount of grace. And I think we can care about the people that are less fortunate and still have some consequence so that we can actually get them out of the situation they're in. Because ultimately, the caring and compassionate thing is to try to do whatever we can to get them out of that situation, so they don't have to live that way, because it's a terrible way to live and exist.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay. Chief, I just want to say first and foremost, thank you and I compliment you. I know the role of a police officer, whether you're fighting crime, enforcing the law, or being a peace officer. And what you exemplify is bringing peace to our community and I thank you for that. Just the first line of, we're not here to punish people, especially those that are homeless. I know it's going to take resources and that's why we've already said, we're going to move forward with the municipal court and give it all the resources it needs, because if you were to arrest them, it's then what? So it's up to the judicial system to do the then what and provide that treatment. One of the biggest concerns I have really is, do we have enough treatment? Are we going to have enough? And I know the courts say they're, they're, they're working with them and there's enough, but, but we've got to continue because that's going to be the next layer of the then what. So we're addressing them. I think this is great. We got to take steps. We have to, you know, peel the layers back and we're doing it with ordinances, we're doing it with the municipal court resources, we'll do it with the resources for the police department and its staff, equipment, technology, innovation. So we'll, we'll continue because we're going to need the resources. We're going to need those resources because we're going to be faced with what's next in order to really have a safe community and to instill the peace that you're looking for. So I really thank you for that. I did have one question. You mentioned the ankle monitors, you know, because that's one of the things of their, how do they get their mail or they're incarcerated or things? What is the purpose of the ankle monitors?
Good question, Mayor, and thank you for your comments. Right now, the municipal court has no pre-trial services, which means if someone's out on conditions of release, there's nothing to actually help them abide by those conditions of release. The way the judge knows that they, they violated them is because they got arrested on something else and they're back before the judge. So this gives us an option, especially for, you know, like the gentleman I showed you at the beginning, or the many like him, those top ten percent of offenders, whatever you want to call them, who continuously re-offend. Now we have an option for the compliance personnel to help keep them accountable. They can also be used to help geofence areas. So let's say a person repeatedly goes to a business and victimizes people. They're grabbing young girls, they're punching people, whatever it is, all that happens. Now you can set a perimeter around it and while they're on conditions of release, if they go in that perimeter, it notifies the compliance officer and they can address it. So it gives us a few tools that we do not have now and I think it's a, a good step. Again, it's very selective on who actually would be under GPS monitoring, but it's a tool we don't have right now.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, next, I want to go ahead and go with some public comments. And if I could get a show of hands of the individuals that would like to speak. Okay, since there, there's several, what, what I'd like to do is just a total maximum of public comments to go to twenty minutes. Each individual can come up here and get two minutes. If you want to relinquish your minutes to somebody else, a max you'll get is six minutes. Again, I ask you to be respectful and polite. I could start with the first row, the second row here on my left and we move forward. If there's, we're, we're not here to get into any debates or anything. If you have some concerns or some questions come up, those will be answered by the chief at the end with his closing comments. So if you could state your name for the record and we'll give everyone two minutes and we'll just go for twenty minutes. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, distinguished commissioners, city counselor. My name is Richard Dean Pugh. I've, I've worked on West Picacho most of my life. In, in the seventies, I would walk from Alameda Junior High to eighteen-eighty-five West Picacho. And I'd work after school until it was time to go home. I came back to that location in May of nineteen and things had changed. My, my wife won't let my granddaughter come to work with me. And that's a sad thing because I spend more of my waking hours at eighteen-eighty-five West Picacho than I do anywhere else. Last week, I had a customer that came in. He sold his house in South Dakota and he bought a truck and a tiny house and his transmission broke down on West Picacho. And while I was working on his vehicle, he was living in his tiny house out behind my shop and I told him, I've got security cameras and I've got friends in the neighborhood and you should be fine back there. The first night they stole his rose bush. And, you know, he was a little upset about that, but he understands. He sees the people that walk by there. The next night, they stole his little cactus garden that was in the little birdcage that was on the front of his, his house. The third night, they stole his electric bike and his little trailer that his dog, Herbie, rides around in. And I got his truck fixed the next day, thankfully. He said, I didn't feel secure there, not one night that I was there. We can spend all the money we want on trying to get things where people come here, but until we fix West Picacho where they feel secure over there, they're not going to come back. Please make it more secure.
Thank you. Anyone else on the second row?
I'm Pat Pugh from AMCO also. And the, the problem with the shopping carts is we have a video of the, the bad guys at two-thirty Sunday afternoon climbing up with some, some sawhorses, stealing the fifteen-hundred dollars worth of tools out of the, out of the Gadsden truck, Gadsden Independent School truck, pushing them across the street to the desert lodge where they, where the fencing operation was. It's, it's totally unacceptable. You guys did the raid a couple of weeks ago. It was wonderful to raid the motel next door, the Imperial Sky, but, and they were only arrested for two or three days. I was offended that, that we are told that the New Mexico people approved bail reform in a, in a referendum. in a, in a referendum. If the problem is bail reform, let's change the legislation and get these people. And, and then the other night, at the town hall, the district attorney said he only has three days to prosecute a crime. That makes no sense at all. So we've got to make a change to make these things work. Thank you for what you do, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Huff, and I wanted to talk about the grocery cart ordinance. I've been involved with this quite a while, since last summer, and when, when I was starting to look at it, I looked at an ordinance in Santa Fe, where they were putting a lot of the onus on the businesses, and making them really responsible, and actually fining the businesses for allowing these carts to go off premises. I went absolutely ballistic that they, that Santa Fe would fine the businesses for having their shopping carts stolen. But then, as I did more and more research, I realized it had to be that way. The businesses need to take some responsibility to mitigate this issue. It's just like, we don't leave our doors unlocked every day. The businesses try to stop the shoplifters inside the business. This is shoplifting outside the business. It's stealing, it's theft. They need to take responsibility. So I appreciate, and I encourage everybody to support this. We do need to make the businesses responsibility, responsible. It's not totally their fault. I mean, the thieves are stealing the carts, and that's what the other part of the ordinance is doing. But we do need to have the businesses participate in this. There, as Chief Story mentioned, there's the electronic brakes, there's the poles, there's a lot of ways to mitigate this. This will help encourage the businesses to do this. This is a step to get started cleaning up this blight. Thank you, Chief Story, for bringing this forward.
Hello, excuse me. Hello, my name is Lisa Parrot. I'm a resident of District 6, and I wrote this on the fly, so I hope it makes sense. We in this room, despite our differing viewpoints, I think it is safe to say, are compassionate toward our fellow human beings. Where we differ is that one group feels no one is above the law, and therefore, no one is arrest-proof. Why should I be arrested for stealing a shopping cart simply because I have a home? One group believes in personal responsibility, and believes all people are responsible for their actions. The other group believes in enabling those who continue to make bad decisions, whether it be from economics, drug abuse, family history, or lack of education, therefore forcing the first group to pay for all of the, what the other groups, other group does by steal, killing, and destroying our property and our city. Now you mentioned revising the zoning ordinance. Perhaps with rehabilitation, treatment, and education, the homeless people can choose to make, become self-supporting, and be able to make good decisions and rent and buy their homes, without reaching into my family's life savings, the equity in our home that you're threatening with this new, with this new zoning review. And then, therefore, those people can have their own homes, won't be homeless, and our city will become a better place. Thank you, and God bless.
Good afternoon. My name is Shawna Pfeiffer. I shared personal experiences from many of your districts within Las Cruces at a previous city council meeting. Those experiences were frightening, numerous, continuing, and unfortunately, not unique to me. Anyone who has property in the city, owns a business, runs an errand, or visits a public park, has to continuously avoid aggressive panhandlers who won't take no for an answer. Most of those aggressive solicitors are clearly in the throes of drug use or mental illness. This makes them unpredictable and downright predatory. We must protect those most vulnerable within our community from violent vagrants that know who they can target. Consider young women with babies in tow leaving a bank, or your grandmother leaving her pharmacy. The proposed solicitation ordinance changes must be adopted to protect them. Do you want tax funding for your affordable housing initiatives? Then help us spend our money at brick and mortar Las Cruces businesses. This ordinance targets aggressive solicitors acting in a predatory manner, not those who warrant our true empathy. If I were a visitor to our once beautiful city, my impression of Las Cruces would be that city government does not care about their community. A city who allows illegal encampments comprised of rounded shopping cart trains filled with trash must not care about the decline of their city. In fact, a city that can't come together after the murder of a police officer by a violent vagrant to ensure it doesn't happen to someone else is a perfect city for criminals to operate with impunity. The proposed shopping cart ordinance will help curb this blight that we've all seen around town. No one is going to go to jail for having a stolen shopping cart, but imposing penalties on possession of stolen carts will create situations where the police can educate folks about services to assist them. It will make it just a little less desirable for those who would come to Las Cruces to take advantage of our empathy and commit crimes within our community. The ordinance is such that businesses bear the brunt of the responsibility to ensure carts aren't stolen in the first place. This is unfair, but necessary to ensure it gets done, as the businesses in this community have become the catalyst for change up to this point. All we are asking is for you to untie the hands of law enforcement, so that we can work together to save our city.
Mayor, councilors. My name is Beth Bardwold. And first, I want to say that not all crime is increasing in Las Cruces. This quarter, crime statistics show a reduction in burglaries, breaking and entering, vehicle theft, and arson. And in fact, total crime is down 5% this quarter. So when today's work session summary begins with a blanket statement that Las Cruces has suffered from increased crime, it's not telling the whole story, right? We're only telling half of the story. That focuses on the bad news, increasing the sense of doom and gloom, and public insecurity and fearfulness, and, and I, I don't agree with that. I fully support actions whose goals are to decrease homelessness, or address unmet behavioral health needs, or substance abuses, abuse treatment needs. Criminal records, however, make it even harder to access shelter, housing, and jobs, and contribute to the cycle of homelessness. What if these criminal ordinances merely shuffle people experiencing homelessness from one neighborhood to another, from one town to another, from streets to jail? Multiple times, I've heard the presenters talk about the importance of perception. This is our version of the broken window theory. Do you remember that from New York City back in the day? And the theory goes that abandoned shopping carts signal that Las Cruces is neglected, and we have an open door to crime. That if we only were to remove those abandoned shopping carts and maintain order, we will get rid of the panhandler and the guy sleeping in a tent on the street. If you review, if you review the research, the broken window theory was largely debunked, and was accompanied by an increase in complaints about police misconduct. The fact is, criminalization of homelessness cannot eliminate extreme poverty and other root causes of homelessness, and I hope you take the Telschore Fund this budget cycle to invest in those root causes and address homelessness.
My name is Dan Parrot, and I'd like to urge the Protem, Mayor, and Councilors to pass these two ordinances, to give the police department the tools they need. Mostly, I'd like to see it to put the responsibility to help prevent the cart losses on the businesses. I personally talked with Walmart management approximately six months ago. The first contact with them, they were very optimistic about it. They asked me to call back about two weeks later. When I called back to Bentonville, Arkansas, their phone numbers had been changed. I left numerous requests for them to call me back to see if we could work with them to come to an equitable solution to this issue. Some of the solutions that I have come up with, and I've done some research on this, is consistent with Chief Story's request in these ordinances. I would request that parking breaks be put on the carts. An option would be to use what airports use, where that if a customer decides to leave the store with a cart, they leave a deposit. When they turn it back to a corral area, they insert their credit card, they get their $50 or $100 credit back. Yes, it's quite a bit of money to put on your card, but that would be one solution. The other request that I would add is to make it illegal to push, pull, possess, or otherwise move a shopping cart on a public right-of-way. This came from a Federal Way, Washington ordinance, which has been very successful. I would ask for equal and fair treatment of all people in Las Cruces, the citizens, as well as the homeless, and to provide help for the homeless. It is cruel and unusual to punish and to obey the law. Everyone needs to do that, not just the citizens, the homeless also. They do need help. I would ask about the thousands of citizens the council has elected to support and represent, and I urge a vote, if positive, on this.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. You know, I said we would go 20 minutes, so we're more than halfway done, so if you can just speak to your point as quickly as you can, so that others can get an opportunity to speak. So you don't have to take the whole two minutes, so.
I won't. Promise. I'll be brief. Mayor, city councilors, my name is Liz Rodriguez Johnson, and I'm a, a citizen of Donaana County. Mental health, homelessness, and drug abuse have been a problem throughout the United States for a long time. What's required are resources to deal with that. You know, unfortunately, most of the ordinances that were proposed assume that the resources are there, that they have, that the courts have everything they need to, to funnel these people to what they, to what the resources they should be getting. I don't think it's there yet, you know, except for the piece that talks about making the businesses responsible for the shopping carts, you know, because that's how it should be. I don't think all the necessary resources are there, and I heard several councils, the mayor, say that, that they're going to do more to get the resources there, but that's what is required, to help solve this problem as much as possible. Unless Las Cruces makes a full commitment to having all the resources there, it's going to continue. And what these ordinances are going to do is what Councilwoman Ben Como said the research showed. It's just going to create a revolving door of these homeless people going in and out, and making their situation a lot worse.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Daniel Williams, and I'm a policy advocate at the American Civil Liberties Union of New Mexico. I want to first thank the council, the mayor, and the city administration for the proactive, creative steps you have taken and are taking to address the harms that poor and unhoused people in Las Cruces experience. I truly believe that homelessness and extreme poverty are among the most pressing moral crises of our time, and they require bold, compassionate action to address. Unfortunately, the proposed solicitation and shopping cart ordinances are not the solutions we need. Few, if any, of us like to see a person experiencing homelessness in our community, including when they are asking for help to survive, or storing their possessions in a shopping cart. But criminalizing these symptoms of the problem will do nothing to solve the problems we're facing. Punishing people for experiencing homelessness or severe economic distress for asking for help with, or for storing their possessions, will not meaningfully improve public safety or address the underlying societal problems. It will, however, risk further entrenched in the person in the cycle of poverty. While we appreciate the chief's attempt to take a holistic approach, and his comments that these ordinances are not intended to criminalize homelessness, it is our deep conviction and concern that that will be their precise effect. If the intent is to create options for care and support beyond criminal enforcement, we should look beyond the criminal legal system as the venue to do that.
The third row, anybody in the third row? And anybody else wishing, if you would, start making your way to the, to the front?
My name is Ray Mosley. I've been around, I used to be, I used to work out of Las Cruces, I used to be a grayhound bus driver.
Sir, can you speak directly to, thank you.
My name is Ray Charles Mosley. I used to come to Las Cruces, I used to be a grayhound bus driver. I see it growed a lot. And I think that lock on the carts, I've been in a lot of cities, that lock on the carts stopped the, the theft of the carts, and moving of the carts. And that, on that 999 Amador, and that the, the security guards would stop them from bringing it on the property would help a lot. You know, they moved a lot of stuff because they come to eat. You know, and providing a locker for them, you know, the lock that slept up would help. And getting the medication, when I, since I became in Las Cruces, I'm a veteran. And the veteran thing, they give me a problem about getting my medication. I picture a lot of psychotropic medication, and I still haven't got it. They send it from Lubbock. You know, it's not that you don't try.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Yeah, if you all can just be brief, there's quite a few behind you.
Mayor, Council, Juan Garcia. Councilman Como, I have presented and challenged the council various times, either publicly and in person, and in email, to join me in the, in my backyard initiative. No one has responded. The offer's still there. Good questions by the council, but it's unfortunate there was no mention of accountability and consequences by and for the criminals. We've been advocating for about two years, and dozens of effective crime victims have stood behind this podium advocating for change to local ordinances. It is unfortunate it took the senseless, cold-blooded murder of a police officer to at least get you to at least consider, to at least consider these changes. Please support the ordinances.
Henry Young. I am probably as compassionate for the homeless as anyone here today. I will say, though, that crime is crime, and these things need to be put in place. This is the beginning of an entire comprehensive plan that can change our city. What the chief and his staff have done is very important. I would like to see it carried out. When I say crime is crime, it's up to them to go ahead and issue those citations, and then let the court decide on a case-by-case situation where compassion can come in. So it's not excluded, it's there. I disagree with what the gentleman from the ACLU said. I have worked with the homeless for a long time. I know how they act, how they work, and they do need help, but this is a beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, city councilors and mayor. I'm Sarah Smith. I am very much in support of these ordinances. I really appreciate Councilor Graham saying we need to try something different. And we've been struggling for a long time trying to figure out, how are we going to get people off the street? How are we going to get people into treatment? This ordinance gives us the ability to do exactly that in a way that we haven't been able to do before. And so we've got to try something different, because what we've been doing is not working. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of including in this ordinance, that ability for community service, which can turn into treatment, which is exactly what this community needs.
My name is Lori English, and I live in the city. I have a couple of questions that I'd just like to throw out for you to consider. First of all, how do you cite a homeless person when they live in a tent, and every other week, that tent may move? Community of Hope and the Gospel Mission have tried to eliminate this problem of finding homeless people, but you can't cite somebody if you can't find them. You can't cite somebody if they're living in another county, or outside of the city. So that's one of the problems. Second of all, having the supermarkets and the stores, in particular Walmart, I don't care how you feel pro or con about Walmart, but the bottom line is, you start imposing demands on Walmart, or Albertson's, or Spouts, or Target, you are going to increase our grocery prices, respectively. Because the more money they have to spend, the more money they're going to pass on to us. Last of all, I just have an issue with the.
Real quick, ma'am.
Item. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Next.
Hi, my name is Keith, and how we can, I actually am homeless, but how I became homeless, my mom was murdered. I was her caregiver, and the Las Cruces Police Department, FIAZ, matter of fact, is the officer. I'm not worried about that. But that's how we came homeless, me and my brother. How we, you can actually sum up this whole problem? Target, the people who are actually making it easy for the homeless to get those carts. And it's the rich people who actually, or the people who have houses, take their carts off the property. And we just happened to see a bin cart, and the one where the officer said there's trash in the cart, that's because there was not near a trash can. Thank you.
Vik Vialova. So I was going to have a lot to say. But, you know, I, my conversation was going to start with Dr. Schumacher calling me last week when one of her female employees was assaulted by a vagrant, who, thanks to Chief Story, was caught. Or the event that we had a couple of weekends ago, we followed the blood trail for a man that had been stabbed out in front of our business. But I think back to one of the original meetings we first had with you all, and even meeting with Counselor Ben Como. And that is one thing you said, "We support Chief Story, and I believe this is about trust." I can tell you, I trust Chief Story. And that's really what it comes down to. Do you believe that your police chief is going to do the right thing for your community? He's not looking to just go arrest people all over the place where he would already. He's looking to try and make our community better. And really, the only question you have to ask yourself is, do you support the chief? I support the chief. We support the chief. So I think it's a pretty simple thing.
Thank you.
Afternoon, council. My name is Jorge Aguirre. I'm a long-term resident. And I'm just here to say that there's a lot of personal responsibility talk spoken around, and absolutely they are correct. However, there's, most of the decisions are outside of the individual's control. So I want to say that it isn't the personal choice of people, but the consequence of pretending that we can incarcerate or ignore our way are most vulnerable, and the problem will go away. The homeless population says more about who we are and how we have failed our people, and instead of talking about the government failure, what we have done over the last several decades, what we can do locally to mitigate it. We want to hide it and find the victims individually, which talks about perception, right? Try to hide the problem instead of showing how it really is in all its pain and all its lack of glory. Many situations can make people unable to afford rent increase next year. So even if we incarcer everybody, we will have more homeless next year.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Hurst. I just want to say that the, Mr. Mayor, I think you're wrong to limit public input. Public input is what democracy is all about. You're the front line of defending democracy. What makes democracy strong is citizens' involvement and their opportunity to speak to their government. So you should maximize the opportunity for public comment and encourage as much as possible instead of discouraging it. As far as homelessness goes, it's a state problem. The homeless go to where there are the most services available to them. That's, they migrate according to climate and according to what services are available. They know, they talk to each other, where's the good next place to go. And the more the cops hassle them, the quicker they move on. It's a state problem. It's a national problem. Las Cruces cannot address that alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Somebody deferred their minutes to me. Is that okay?
Yeah, no, we're down to just one minute for everyone.
So I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Kyle Schumacher of Schumacher Veterinarian Services.
Can you speak directly into the mic?
I'm speaking for Dr. Kyle Schumacher from Schumacher Veterinarian Service. She'd like to publicly declare her support for the proposed solicitation and shopping cart ordinance. I don't know if you all are aware of a young lady that was attacked at her business a while back, about a week ago, and she's grateful for the support, the support that she received from the local community and the officers. However, this story only enforces the importance of revising and enforcing these ordinances. There is no excuse for the activities that are clearly designated legal solicitation, trespassing on private property, theft, drug use, and now instance of a personal battery. We only ask that you support these proposals to change and do what's right for the public safety, and do not support the condone or condone these behaviors. We, as law-abiding and contributing members, deserve your attention.
Ma'am, thank you. Ma'am, ma'am, for the record, could you give us your name again?
Stacy Boswell. And each one of you was emailed the statement from Dr. Schumacher as well.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, mayor pro tem, and council members. My name is Monet Silva, and I'm the executive director of the New Mexico Coalition in Homelessness. These ordinances will further criminalize those experiencing homelessness, and they will directly intact their potential for future housing, job opportunities, et cetera. If these ordinance should pass, please build the system first. We are seeing time and time again throughout the state that ordinances are being proposed, and there's not a system in place to assist them. These ordinances seem to be more aimed around appearances and not actually getting help to the people that most need them. If these should move forward, we ask that you have the right people at the table to make these ordinances as informed by individuals experiencing homelessness, advocates, and providers. Please work to build a complete system. And lastly, please remember that homelessness and crime do not always go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Carla Martinez, and I'm here just to share what I think for myself. Okay, number one, can you stop to think just about the benefit for the homeless and start to think about the rest of the community? Number two, about shopping cart, they don't care if Walmart can buy more. It's like, say, if somebody takes my cart, it's my fault because I have one and I can buy another one? Number three, stop to using the homeless word. We don't think they are bad people, and start to use the real word to the people who need to be punished. They are the drug dealers who destroy the city every day. They are the real problem here. We can go to the store or park or just walk around because that people are mentally lost and use drugs in front of everybody, are naked in the streets, and are very aggressive. And we need to explain all these things to our children, why. Stop to use, to say this problem is because the police don't do their job. All here, no, they are just the first step to control this, and we support them.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Your time's up.
Thank you.
And you'll be the last one once you got in line kind of late, but I'll allow it. Go ahead.
Hell, you're dead wrong to do what you're doing, mayor. Having said that, I'm Peter Goodman. Reluctantly, I support, for the most part, the ordinances 61, 62, and 63, and the shopping cart ordinance as far as stopping the supply and holding Walgreens and others responsible, making them try to prevent theft. I have real concerns about the part about arresting somebody with a shopping cart. I think, I wish there'd been, there were more time to tinker with that and make it fairer to the homeless and more likely to survive judicial scrutiny. So you might consider that. I agree generally with the ACLU and everybody else. On the other hand, until we're ready to go clean up shit in back of people's businesses, I don't think we who are not suffering it can fairly say, oh, yeah, you know, it's nothing.
Thank you. Chief Story. Oh, hold, is there anyone else has? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, mayor, for catching that. I just want to say one quick thing, because I think it's just really important that we don't feel a narrative that it's us versus them. It's not. I think, I've talked to chief often, actually. Sorry, chief, I probably know you more than I should. And so I don't want to create this narrative that we don't, that I don't support the chief because that's just not true. And I hope you know that, chief.
Thank you, mayor, mayor pro tem.
Chief, was there anything, any final comments or anything based on what was said, if you want to?
I did, mayor, I appreciate that. One, just to clarify again, nobody is going to be arrested for possession of a shopping cart or a violation of the solicitation ordinances. Difference between a physical arrest and a criminal citation, on paper may not be much, but obviously in real life, going to jail or getting a piece of paper is a very different thing. One of the other things I want to mention is that, you know, improving services that we have available, I agree that we probably don't have the service, or we, probably, we don't have the services we need when it comes to mental health in the southern part of New Mexico, especially when it comes to forensic care. We also don't probably have the resources we need for substance use. But there are a lot of resources here. There are a lot of good people in that field, whether it's Medicaid-assisted treatment, counseling, and all these other services, and they are not at capacity. Why? Because at this point, there is no way to compel people, or there's very little ways to compel people to get that treatment. And so continuing to just hope that people will decide to get the treatment on their own is not working, and it's not going to work. And at some point, you can lead a horse of water, you can't make them drink, but you can make them thirsty. And when they're committing crimes, that's an opportunity to make them thirsty, hopefully to improve their life, and ultimately then improve the community. And the last thing I want to say is, for the people that aren't in the trenches with the officers, they see the worst of the worst that this society and this city has to offer every day in a way that very few citizens see. The outreach team from Community Outreach sees it, other people do see it, but they see what the reality is in the ditches, in the culverts, in the tunnels. And it's, it's fair to say that our assessment is far more accurate than the person who sees it from a theoretical standpoint, or from an office, or from an academic standpoint. Not that those aren't important, but the reality is not nearly as pretty as painted by some. And if we continue to do what we're doing, we're going to continue to see it get worse because that's what's happened in the last few years. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Chief Story. Looking over to my colleagues, I'm like, I'm in favor of moving these ordinance forwards. And everyone else, in agreement?
In agreement, move it forward.
I disagree. Do not move it forward.
I'd like to move it forward.
Okay. Anyone else?
Like to move them forward.
Okay. We'll move it forward. Again, chief, thank you. I appreciate you bringing this forward to the public. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for being very respectful. I appreciate you all for caring about our community. I think chief has said it several times, it's, if we work together, we can get a lot accomplished. So thank you for supporting our police department as well. Thank you.
Move to adjourn. Second, Graham.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Coran?
No. Yes, yes.
Counselor Flutus?
Counselor Flutus?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.